This conference will now be recorded.
I'm good, how about you? Do you have another busy day?
Can we open these?
I would presume so. Didn't say highly confidential anywhere.
Those stamps?
Whoever did, I didn't want you to open it.
I thought he said they were going to be present, so they're just logging in. You could be. Alright. I'll wait for the rest. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of La Center's workshop. And the work session. This evening, five thirty PM, we're running a little late here, Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. We'd like to start the recording, clerk, if you haven't already beaten to it. And call the meeting to order and begin with roll call.
Councilmember Fox?
Present.
Councilmember Casper?
Present on the computer.
Councilmember Boyle?
Here.
Councilmember Strobin?
Present.
Mayor Protem Cervini?
Present. Thank you, everyone. And this evening, we have and wish to welcome Joelle Loshner or Leschner?
I think it's Loshner.
Hopefully, I'm not murdering it too badly. And Jessica Fishburne from Clark County. And they are going to answer the questions that we have regarding recycling options. So welcome this evening. And I believe Brian is going to run the screen for you as you progress through your slide presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. Good evening, council. I believe with the county, we also have Sarah Kearns, who's the solid waste education and outreach manager. As you mentioned, they'll be available to answer questions or chime in if I miss any items. But I will run through the presentation here, then I'll turn it over to Joelle to see if she has any additional information before we turn the discussion over to the council. So we are here this evening to talk about the recycle contract and then by extension, potentially garbage service and yard debris service as well. So to start out with a little bit of background here, the city currently operates the recycle contracts with Clark County via interlocal agreement that was signed in two thousand eight. Battleground and Yakult also utilize the county contract for recycling services. And last year, if you recall, we were talking about this, there was a county service change to switch to every other week pickup of recycling. Listen to here, and also Yakult also followed the county's lead to switch over to that every other week service while Battleground remained at a weekly service at an increased rate of recycling that worked out to be about two dollars a month to retain that weekly recycling service. The contract was due to expire last year, but was extended an additional year to give the cities that are utilizing the contract additional time to figure out which direction we want to go. And as we discuss these options and the direction that we want to go, we will need to provide the county notice of our intent on that direction by June thirtieth of this year. So next slide, please. So the options that we are exploring this evening are first to continue operating under that county contract for recycling and also for the county contract for yard debris service. The second option would be to negotiate our own contract with Waste Connections for recycling, and we could also expand that to be a more comprehensive contract to also include yard debris service and garbage collection as well. And then the last option would be looking at the potential to use another waste hauling provider for recycle service or those other two, yard debris or garbage as well here in La Center. So the first option, continuing under the county contracts, and just again, a little bit of overview of how it all works because of the waste collection is a fairly complex topic, deceptively so. So the county and Clark County Public Health operates the and control the solid waste in the county through their solid waste management plan, and that really, they work with the cities. I'm a member of a solid waste steering committee. There's also a citizen committee that helps oversee solid waste, but really, that's sort of the overarching principle, similar to the comprehensive plan for planning. The county sort of takes the lead and then the cities feed up into that. The county also contracts with Columbia Resource Company, which is a subsidiary of Waste Connections, to operate the transfer stations and recycling process facilities in the town. So when garbage recycling, yard debris is picked up in City of La Center or throughout the county, it goes to those county operated transfer stations. For recycling service specifically, as I mentioned, that contract was due to expire last year, but it was extended out to the end of this year. They, the county is currently working on the updated contract, and that will be available in its sort of final draft form late in May or early in June. So we'll have a little bit more information in that timeframe on that and what exactly that's going to look like. But I think, and I guess I mentioned at the end, I'll turn this over to Joelle and she can chime in. She's in the thick of that negotiation, but I think broadly speaking, it'll be relatively similar to the current contracts, the every other week service and similar rates. Let's see here. And then, as I mentioned, we'll have to provide notification to the county on what direction we're going to go here by the end of June. So we have a month or so, once do we actually have that county contract to decide if that's something that we're that we are interested in participating in or not at that point. And then finally, yard debris service, again, that's currently managed by a separate contract from the recycle contract via the county, and that interlocal agreement expires in July, end of July of twenty twenty-five. So really, the advantages of the county model would be that there's pretty minimal staff time to manage that. The county really does the heavy lifting on the contract. There may be better costs for residents as we, there's a large base of consumers throughout the county and the other cities that participate under this agreements. But the disadvantage, as we've learned, is that there, we have limited control over those services. Next slide, please, Alex. So the second potential option would be to negotiate our own contract for recycling service. And again, we could also maybe expand that to also include garbage and yard debris as well. This is similar to what the city of Ridgefield does. They have their own contract with Waste Connections that they negotiate and operate. Again, we'd need to provide that notice that we intend to do that to the county by the end of June, and then we would work for the remaining year to negotiate a contract with Waste Connections to provide recycling services. And if we so choose, other services as well here in this La Center. We can then, as we're negotiating that contract, we can have a little bit more control as we balance service level and rates that residents are paying. So advantages of this method, garbage rates would stay the same, and we'll talk a little bit more about garbage in a second here. But we would have more control over the recycling and yard debris contracts and levels of service. Disadvantages is there's a smaller consumer base here for just La Center residents. There's a potential that costs could increase. That would really come out in the negotiation process, what the actual costs are. And then the city would be responsible for managing that contract, and we could potentially lose support functions from the county. For example, the county is assisting us with a hazardous waste collection event here in the next few months. So sort of services like that, we would either not have the access to the counter, we would have to front those costs to complete those events on our own. The third option, looking at contracting with another waste hauler, for example, someone, you know, one of the waste haulers that operates up in Cowalts County. And that gets to be a little bit complex. So the Washington State Utilities and Transportation Commission, or UTC, currently, or they regulate waste hauling in the state. And this map here is the service area for Clark County, so the whole area that you see there in yellow comes or is Waste Connection service area through agreement with the UTC. The UTC's authority is established in RCWs, and just a little bit of real brief background on the UTC, they were originally established as a railroad commission to try and control rates and levels of service for railroads back at the turn of the century, nineteen oh five. That was then expanded to utilities and eventually into transportation industries as well. And the UTC's regulatory services division conducts economic regulation of, among other things, solid waste collection companies, which is why they're relevant to what we're talking about here tonight. So to look at another waste hauler other than Waste Connections, there would be a process to leave the W, the Washington UTC Authority, as well as the county contracts, we would need to provide notice to the state UTC. And because the way the contracts are set up, there's, the city would be liable for liquidated damages for the, about ten years for the current tariff holder, which is Waste Connections. To potentially avoid or reduce those liquidated damages, we might be able to negotiate a seven to ten year agreement to help to minimize that. I don't have a great feel for what those costs will be. If that's something, that's something we can explore a little bit further if that's something that the council would like, but it's more involved than you would think, just on first glance.
Go back on that, on
Sure.
What the, how the tariff works and everything. So it was developed whenever, a long time ago, basically?
Yeah, so, and I was, I've been studying up on this myself, and it's, it's a very complex system. But essentially, the state is broken down into all these different service areas, and then the state basically awards a contract and then controls the prices of those contracts for, you know, all waste haulers that serve the entire state. So in this particular area, Waste Connections has that contract. They, their rates have to go to the WTC for them to review and approve to make sure that they're fair and equitable throughout the county. And, you know, so similar thing for Cowalts County, they have a different waste hauler that serves them and throughout. And in this particular county, if we can go back to the map there, we actually have, in Clark County, there's three different waste haulers, but the bulk of the county is served by Waste Connections. But there is some, an area, I think it's along Waschugel River Road, that's served by another waste hauler that also serves Skamania County. And then up in the Clark County site of Woodland is another waste hauler as well that serves Cowalts County.
And then as far as like payment, the damages and stuff like that, that's just based on the contract. I'm not familiar with
Yeah.
terminology and stuff, but, um, so this is
So essentially
off of that contractor, RCW, or whatever it was that was signed into
Yeah, so we'd have, it would, it would take some digging to kind of figure out exactly how that works, but basically Waste Connections, you know, sort of awarded the exclusive contract for serving, you know, this area. So if we were to, you know, exit from that, there would be some damages that we would have to compensate them for potentially.
Unless we chose one of the other two, right?
Unless we choose one of the other two. Yeah, this is basically if we want to just say, hey, Waste Connections, thanks, but no thanks, we're going to look at other options here and, you know, and other waste haulers essentially. So, you know, the advantage of that op, this method is obviously we have high level of control, full control over everything. The disadvantages is there's, you know, quite a bit of staff time negotiations and et cetera that go along with that, as well as the costs of liquidated damages. There's also an uncertainty of, you know, whether we could attract another waste hauler to bid essentially, and then what the price they would provide is. And then again, similar to the option two, there's a potential, or we would lose the support of the county solid waste department as well.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm very interested to see what the options are, but I think finding out what those liquidated damages would be, that would be responsible for paying for would kind of give us a lot of direction in, you know, where we want to go.
Sure.
Obviously, it's got to make financial sense in all ways.
The other side, though, what he just said, the solid waste, so that's pretty important.
Oh, can, the solid waste. So can you elaborate on that a little bit, Brian?
Yeah, and, and to be fair, there, we may be able to negotiate a separate contract with the county. So for example, you know, the county has obviously a large staff under a Department of Health that runs their solid waste program. So, you know, right now, we basically receive their services from that staff through their, the recycle and the yard debris contract. If we choose either in option two or three and exit from those contracts, we could potentially still negotiate a contract for their assistance and service as well. But, you know, by default, essentially, we lose those services unless we negotiate something else by exiting those, their contracts.
Do we get a lot of people that call in, like dissatisfied with the service where it is now?
Would you say? I don't know of any calls, Maria might be able to add, but I have heard some sort of, you know,
I mean, since the change
frustrations about the change.
Yeah.
And particularly, and I think Councilman Boyle mentioned this, is, you know, when we had these snow events and
Right.
and, and services not provided, then you're waiting four weeks
Yeah.
instead of two for recycling. So again, that might be something that we might be able to potentially address under the county contract, you know, if we raise that as a stakeholder. Or if we negotiate our own contract, we could, you know, build something in there that says, hey, if, you know, service is missed, they provide that service the following week or something like that, so that we don't have those long gaps, like a month-long gap in recycle service. Because that's
Right.
that's a pretty big disadvantage, I would say.
We have not received any calls, there's just been a little bit on Facebook.
Sure, of just people making comments, yeah. I mean, I think if, yeah, if there's not that big outcry of, we need it every, every week, recycling specifically, then, you know, I mean, obviously, prices are going up everywhere, we all know that, so it's either take the price increase and accept it every week, or, you know, go with kind of what we've been doing if it's working.
And if you recall, the discussion when this came forward, you know, last year was, you know, we can maintain the same cost and sort of have a reduced level of service with this every other week service, although I believe that they can provide larger or additional recycle bins at no additional charge, you know, for those that need them. Or we can maintain that weekly service, and it was that two dollar a month rate increase that would, you know, was, was the, the cost increase to maintain the existing level of service.
Nice to hear.
It was two dollars?
Two dollars a month, yeah.
Well, and I feel like concerned about trying to burn bridges with one of the biggest waste management companies in the county, right? I mean, to sit there and go, oh, we're going to decide our, I mean, we're one of the tiniest towns, what are we, yeah, how much muscle do we have? That seems a little ridiculous to kind of, I mean, obviously, everybody wants to control, but at the end of the day.
I don't think it's based on what side of the town we are, whatever, I think it's just based more upon level of service and like what we expect to like have everybody's recycling and garbage needs met. I mean, something that's pretty essential to have when your garbage and your recycling. I do see a lot more garbage on the roads, like just from trashes being overfilled and recycling being overfilled and falling out and whatnot. I mean, just
I'm just saying, if Battleground came out with an outcry, there's over twenty thousand people there, they would listen more. If La Center's like, we want this, they're going to be like, yeah, well, we can't do that for you, you know, maybe, because we're just, that's what I mean, like,
I think
they might not budge as much with our, like, our desires because we don't, I mean, the money probably isn't, you know, they want to keep it simple, whatever that looks like for them.
Very valid point, both.
Yeah, and they have, they understand their business way more than we do, you know? They have to make simplified decisions and try to cut back on, you know, trucks on the road and, you know, trying to hire and all of those things, so.
Yeah, I would say, I think you're right, there's probably some strength in numbers there, but, you know, sort of the mid-ground option, I would guess, would be if we, you know, do negotiate our own contract, you know, we could look at, you know, the level of service and costs in Ridgefield, I think Battleground, I believe to maintain that weekly service, they're going to have to negotiate their own recycle contract, so they're kind of going to go it alone. So, you know, if we stay with Waste Connections, you know, they're, they're obviously still operating in the area, and the UTC is still reviewing all these prices so that we're, you know, not getting disproportionately charged compared to, you know, other areas of the county. But if we leave that model, it's potentially risky because, you know, it's sort of the Wild West at that point.
The complaints I hear is the recycling, and I do hear them from people around town. They, they don't like the fact that the recycling's stacking up or they've got too much because it's now gone to two weeks.
Yeah.
And I'm one of those people, and I know a few others.
Yeah, well, we have two bins and it's no fun pulling them both out, so.
Right, well, I mean, at that point, once the recycling bin's been filled, people are starting to put it in the trash can, so it defeats the entire purpose of recycling. So even, I'm sorry.
Sorry, do we know the number of people who have requested a second bin?
I don't know that we have that data. We could potentially see if we could get it from Waste Connections. And I guess this might be a good time to turn the floor over to Joelle and the county staff to see if they have any other additional information to provide as we transition into the discussion phase.
We welcome you both and open up the mics for your discussion and presentation.
Well, good evening, councilors. Sorry, we're not there in person. We are in back-to-back meetings, so it's very fortunate that we're able to do this hybrid thing, so thank you for inviting us. And thank you, Brian, for a really great presentation. I think he really encapsulated sort of the options, and I wanted to make sure that you all knew the county is here to support you in whatever decision you decide to make. So if you decide to stay on and kind of keep it status quo, sign on with our interlocal, we'll make sure that we're hearing the requests that you have as we negotiate our contract. If you decide to go and do your own contract, we will help support you in that way as well. So that's, Brian asked us to come here to sort of answer questions, but just, I wanted to reiterate that we really are here as a support for you all. I would say that when you're weighing the options, you definitely want to weigh the risk of, of either one and the, the potential financial benefit. Like you might have theoretically more control, but then you might, you know, we were hearing these complaints about recycling service everywhere in the county. Obviously, going to every other week was not ideal for any of us, really, and we didn't really have much in the way of negotiating that. And I would definitely encourage you to have Waste Connections come and speak at your council so they can answer more industry-specific knowledge to their business. And we are noticing all of the things that you mentioned in regards to that every other week change. What I have been told and what I have heard is that there really is no other option unless you really want your rates to increase.
And now I'm confused, right? I'm a little confused because you just said it would be like two dollars more.
That was what Battleground said that their rate increase was for this one-year period, you know, there's no guarantee that that would be, you know, when they negotiate their own contracts, you know, that, that's really, will come out, you know, what the, what the, if, if that changes. But, you know, for a rough number, at least, you know, based on current data, it was a two dollar, two dollar a month service rate increase.
Okay. And who's
And that was temporary.
That's Joelle, she's the interim solid waste manager for the county.
Okay, so Joelle, last year, Waste Connections did come out and speak with us, and one of the questions I posed, I posed to them, because they kept telling us the data says that they only need to do every other week. So I asked where they were pulling their data from, and it wasn't from the Town of La Center when they were telling us what it was going to be. It was from outside in the North County. And if that's still the case, then nothing really changes, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I heard this as well, and I think what, the data that they had shared with us and what they had said too is that, oh, well, we're, we're seeing that the carts are going out half-full. And I think Sarah, you know, she's managing the outreach team, and Jess, both of them have a little bit more information. If you either, if you want to speak up on this, because I know you were involved in some of the outreach component of discussing all of this last year.
Now, correct me, excuse me, correct me if I'm wrong, but on some of the earlier discussions that we had, my recollection was also that staff or the presenter mentioned the availability of having two recycle bins at no cost.
Yeah, and if I recall correctly, the presentation that we had was some other county staff that I think Joel, Joelle's replaced that was giving that previous presentation. I don't think we've actually had Waste Connections come out, we could definitely have them come out if the council would, would like to, I'm sure they'd be happy to, as we're continuing to explore our options here.
Well, I think in order for us to make a decision, we have to have all of the data in front of us and have it all be accurate and current.
I agree, and I think a key piece to also come with the draft county contract that comes here towards end of May, beginning of June, that'll be a, that'll be a key piece of the puzzle here.
And it's also important to, I think, think about our access to, you know, local dumps, you know? It's not as easy for people necessarily to take their trash on their own because they're not like, we have a lot close by, in my opinion. So it's easier to just let it pile up, where people in Battleground or Orchards can drop off, or, you know, if they have backup issues.
To add on to that, there's also another discussion, I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but mandatory service is another point of discussion, and let's see, chief nodding his head, when we were both at Battleground fifteen years ago, it was a point of discussion then, I think they're still talking about it right now, but under the current county recycle contract, there is potentially a cost savings if we were to implement mandatory recycle service. There may also be savings if we were to implement mandatory garbage service because that, it's basically, it's a guaranteed consumer base for the waste hauler. Obviously, there's some, you know, some negative repercussions of that sort of change as well, but just so you have that in the back of your heads as well, you know? It's another option to potentially reduce, reduce rates.
Well, that reduces rates for some, but for those that don't have
For those that don't have the service, it's not reducing it, yeah.
Yeah, it reduces waste, but reduces the, the rate for some, but not for the people that don't have it already.
Correct, that's correct.
Yeah. And I believe Al was one that brought that to my attention
Yep.
last year.
Was there somebody else online that was going to add something to say, I thought somebody else was going to speak?
Casey, did you have questions too?
Well, I'm just kind of taking this all in. I guess my concern is that the writing's kind of on the wall with the contract that the, that the county had signed with a service that Waste Connections is willing to provide. I'm not a big fan of, of having city staff go through a significant amount of work to reinvent the wheel. And then my other concern would be simply that we put out an RFP and nobody responds to it, to it, which is becoming more and more common in government contract work, so. That's where I'm at, just listening in.
Thanks, Casey.
But we can still explore, right? Just at least take a look what's out there and get some pricing and data in.
Yeah, so, well, we can do some research on what that, that liquidated damage cost might be. We can also, you know, gather some data on costs, for example, up in Cowalts County, which might, you know, give us at least a window into whether folks are paying, but again, I, you know, there's, if we choose that route, there's some, some complications that come up of it, so maybe we can explore those a little bit more. Really, we're not, we don't need a direction or a decision tonight, this is sort of just reintroducing the topic because, you know, that really, that decision point comes in the June timeframe where we're, you know, giving notice on sort of where we intend to go. So as I mentioned, that we, you know, between now and then, there's some additional data we can gather from the, the county as they complete negotiations, their recycle contract. And, you know, basically, the plan would be to come back in that early June timeframe and
Yeah, well, I'm with you on that one, Casey. I, I agree, I don't think reinvent the wheel's good, but I do think that we should at least look at pricing or any of those type of terms that are out
or any of those type of terms that are out there. Because we don't have to actually give a notice just to look at it, right?
No.
Right. And then we're at the end of April, so we have 60 days before we have to have this signed. So that's not a lot of time to at least take a look and make a decision either.
Brian, some of the basic rate information can also be pulled off of the WTC.
Yes. When we come back in June too, we could also potentially have Waste Connections attend and provide some additional information as well.
Would they be able to tell us what the rates would be if we wanted to go to a weekly service on?
I think they could probably have a pretty good idea. Because as I mentioned, Battleground's sort of having the same discussion. It seems like they are leaning towards, at least from what I currently understand, maintaining that weekly service. So, you know, that thought process and data gathering from the Waste Connection side is probably in progress right now.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's fair to say we would love, yeah. What would be those numbers for us? Because obviously, we want, you know, every week. But if it's going to be astronomical, then that's one I think we have to really scratch our heads. If we can give the people what they want for $2 or $4 or $5, I mean, geez, that's, I mean, to me, that's a no-brainer. I mean, that's not that much, in my opinion. But to get it off your property, off your, what were we going to say?
Well, I was going to say, I feel like when this was presented last year that we knew that it was going to be $2 a more, a more.
I don't remember that at all.
And then I thought that, and I could be mistaken, but I thought that your response was that costs are increasing everywhere. So if we could keep a cost down in some aspect.
But I would, I do, I mean, I remember having that opinion, yes. And it was like, people should take their stuff and take it to the dump if they get that much. But I don't remember $2 at all. I mean, that just seems.
Yeah, I don't know if we had an actual dollar.
That's so irrelevant, $2? I don't remember that figure. It could have been presented, but I personally, I remember having that feeling, but not about $2.
I think the direction was, let's give it, try the reduced service and see how it goes. And so now we have that data point.
I was imagining it being like $25, $30. That's what I imagined. So when, you know, when I was originally thinking that, that's what me as a business owner was thinking. If there's going to be an increase like that and they're cutting back, it's got to be, it has to be worth their while to add that week back. If they're saying, nope, this is what we're willing to do right now with our price structure, what you're paying. Well, then it must, it's going to cost quite a bit more. That's usually how services work. So $2, yeah, I don't remember that piece, so I apologize. But obviously, you know, yeah. Get all the facts straight. That's what we're here for.
Is there any other questions that the council would like me to do some research on as we're preparing to come back in that June timeframe?
No, I'd just like to see what those liquidated damages, get an idea on that. And then, yeah, we could get Waste Connections in here too. I mean, it just doesn't hurt to explore. And while we have, you know, we have, oh, that's another question I had is, how long would the new contract typically be for?
I think they're generally a five-year contract with like a five-year extension option, is what I've seen.
Sorry to interrupt you, Brian, but it is a 10-year contract. We're kind of lining it up with the new CRC contract that we're also in negotiations with. And then there will be an extension on it. So these typically are 10-year contracts.
Okay.
And then this one in particular, as you all probably know, we've extended it quite a few times as we were sort of anticipating. Should we go out to RFP? Should, because all of these things that you were talking about, the county has talked about as well. I mean, we have considered these things too.
Well, thank you for your time and being with us this evening. No other questions? We'll go ahead and adjourn the work session and come back at 6:30 for our regular meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian. Good presentation.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Joel.
It works.
Good. How many employees do you have?
Total, between all companies?
Well, in the IT business.
We're not monsters. We're one of the bigger ones in the city. I think more just the recognition of us.
But what?
Is, no, I think like, just.
Exactly.
But we don't need to be a force.
Right, and there's a school, though, in La Center City, and there's a little bit of division there, you know, in a sense. When it comes to that kind of stuff, like that.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's Wednesday, April 26, 2023, regular meeting. We'll call this meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, can we please have a call?
Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Councilmember Casper.
Present.
Councilmember Boyle.
Here.
Councilmember Strobin.
Present.
Mayor Protem Servini.
Present. Thank you, everyone. Citizens' public comment, and we'll begin with clerk. Please call those in the audience up for their public comments.
Dennis Hill.
Look at this.
Fancy.
Nice, huh?
Now it is, it's turned on now? God bless. I like it. Greetings, council and city, La Center citizens. First of all, I want to thank Greg Thornton, our outgoing mayor, for his many years of service to the city of La Center. Greg gave a good part of his life to service, and his dedication of professionalism as mayor needs to be recognized. Again, thank you for all you have done for our city. I wish you well and hope you will join us at a city council meeting soon as a La Center citizen. We need your experience and wisdom as we move forward. Thanks again. Second, I want to give an endorsement this evening to Liz to continue as our city mayor. She has the experience and knows the workings of our city, and more importantly, she knows our city staff. Having someone who can provide leadership for the next few months is very important. She has shown us her leadership skills, and as a mayor and current city councillor, I believe she is the most qualified for this position of mayor. Thank you, and let's keep Liz at the helm for the next several months. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Next.
Al Philla.
Al Philla, 152 West 15th Street. Lot of decisions you guys got to make tonight, and then we'll go back to the spiel I gave the first time after we come back from the pandemic when it was closed down. Due diligence, make sure when you vote, you've done your due diligence on whatever matter. You know, what may be important to you may not be important to the person next to you, but some of them are important to all of us, and those decisions are made tonight. And we got a lot of people here, wow, this is the biggest crowd we've had since, you know, a long time, so that's good. You know, maybe there's something going on tonight, I don't know, but anyway, do your due diligence. You know, otherwise, you're probably going to hear from me, you know, every, you know, but anyway, thank you all. Y'all do a good job. God bless America.
Thank you, Al.
Judy Hill.
Judy Hill, 1316 West Alton Place. Dear councilmembers, I strongly I strongly recommend Council Liz Servini to be elected as mayor for the remaining term. Important reasons why are: She is the only one who has experience and knowledge of how to even conduct a council meeting and knows the proper protocol, how councillors should conduct themselves, right or wrong, during a council meeting, as well as having the experience as mayor in the past. She has served our city for many years and has been actively involved in many capacities. Love and is loyal for the best interests of our city and works at being a team member. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Next.
Karen Stewart.
Welcome.
Hi, Karen Stewart. I'm the Secretary of La Center United, 1417 West Alton Place. I'm here in response to our drug takeback event on Saturday. We are super excited to announce that we had double the participants than we did in October, and we were able to take 109 pounds of medication that out of homes that could be misused or accidentally taken or whatever other reasons. So we do totally appreciate that. We did want to say a personal thank you to Chief Richardson, who spent six hours with us on Saturday, and our board, and he gave his time and he made it possible for us to have it when the Kowals announced semi-last minute that we were not going to be able to have it there. But lots of people came because it was close and in town, and we hope we can continue the tradition of having it with law enforcement here in town. And so we were super excited about that. It's a huge benefit to our community to have events like this, to help not only our youth, but also our community in general with drugs. And we'd also like to thank Councilwoman Fox for her generous donation once again, and the people that have put the hard work into the community, and we appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kimberly Elbin.
Kimberly Elbin, life citizen of Clark County, here in La Center for 30 years. I was undefeated last week at a pool tournament, but I chose to attend this important council meeting. I want to report on the, this morning's Clark County Council, excuse me, Board of Health and the council meeting. It's real deep, but the rate of HIV is tripled and higher than any county here in Washington State. Their prevention program has spent hard-earned tax dollars for over 30 years, and the presenters had no statistics. This is a concern for all Clark County cities. Clark County is one of the three top counties for gun violence. So we rank within the top three of all counties. Citizens today finally came out and said they were vaccine-injured and no longer trust medicine, man, male neck. It was heartbreaking to hear, as I told the council last year, that citizens will be very angry about their COVID mandates and now the, and the outcome of a lot of those people. I also spoke about my son, Cleve Goheen Rango, and his victimization from the state of Washington through CPS, DSHS, family court, and a corrupt legal system. The understanding I have in my journey, excuse me, with God is he will work here in La Center of the universe, Clark County, Washington, to put forth a unity bill that will free millions of captured children in our system to their loving families. The world will know that unity is a child, a child with four siblings that were taken for no good reason and has caused great behavioral health issues to my son. His, he lost his young manhood, and most importantly, his God-given right to raise his children. We will prove Supreme Court Justice Raquel Montoya Lewis took his parental rights away, knowing she did it with fabricated evidence from a state social worker. I won't go on much longer. I think my time's coming up, but we will get these children, my grandchildren, back home to their heritage and their loving families. These children have been documented harmed by the state of Washington, and they were COVID jabbed, they've been trafficked, and two of them are with transgenders against our will. Stop all chemical sprays in La Center city limits. Plant those fruit trees and blueberry bushes. It kills the worms in the ground. Those worms are essential to good soil making. Spray kills frogs, and frogs kill mosquitoes. So let's stop the spraying, La Center. Spray kills our bees, and without them, we die. Stop using dryer sheets, as the fumes kill the bees, and insects also harm our lungs. Citizens, citizens, get involved now in your local government and the Clark County Council and Board of Health. I also want to say they can watch the johnburtsociety.org.
Kimberly. Your time's up.
Thank you. Just a little note, our city is spelled incorrectly here at your Exhibit A. Thank you.
Thanks. We'll fix it.
There are no more cards from the audience.
All right. Hello, oh, wait, okay. Hello, council. My name is Justine Stimmel, and I know a lot of your faces, so it's good to be here. And I'm a resident of La Center. This is my first time speaking, actually, a La Center city council meeting. And many of you know my husband, John Stimmel. He's a former council member that served on the La Center City Council. He's here tonight with my daughter. So the reason why I'm here tonight is to give thanks and appreciation. I want to thank Mayor Greg Thornton for serving on the council. I appreciate and respect Mayor Thornton, and I wish the best to him and blessings of peace and healing with his health concerns. I also would like to thank Councilmember Sean Boyle for making his voice heard at last night's La Center school board meeting. Thank you. Thank you so much, Sean. I appreciate it. A lot of us appreciate it. So Councilmember Boyle came to show his full support of our courageous superintendent, Peter Rosenkranz, and school board members on the stance regarding gender expression and policies. He's right when he says those speaking in opposition, they're not from La Center, okay? And they are wasting their time, and I completely agree, and the majority of people support Mr. Rosenkranz and the school board. The reason I highlight Councilmember Boyle is because this is what it looks like to serve and get engaged in our community, and as parents, we have, we have to have the courage to say something, especially regarding the well-being of our children. We are in a wartime appointment, and for our children, the public schools, and it is our job to be the primary stakeholders of our children's education, and most certainly push back the woke garbage and ideologies. I sure hope we don't see any more witches casting spells at the meetings, because that actually was, that happened last night, and it was very disturbing, and that really did happen. Okay, not okay, but this is the very nature that is happening, so I hope they don't do that again. And I encourage the community to read the facts about the pronoun policy on the website, clarkcountytoday.com, and on their Facebook page. And I also encourage the community of La Center and the La Center Church to get involved, to make a difference, to stand up for children and parental rights, and please be a voice of truth and strength in what is right. I also want to thank Kimberly Elbin. Kimberly, thank you for consistently speaking at our city council meetings and the county council meetings. I know she is passionate, and at times she's rough on the edges, but she really does mean well, and she has a strong voice, a strong voice of truth, and she, she really does mean well for citizens, for liberty, and for freedom. Lastly, I want to highlight the La Center Middle School and High School for allowing Sergeant Bill Sofianis, I hope I said that right, his name, for presenting, he was, he presented in assembly format at the middle school and high school, and he talked about the dangers of fentanyl. And I think that's really important to highlight because it's an epidemic. It's a drug epidemic, and we're right here along the I-5, and it's plaguing our schools. And so we must bring that to awareness. So thank you so much. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate you guys.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Sharen Alkashery. I'm at 300 East 15th Place, and I wanted to thank each and every one of you for what you guys do, and I'll keep this brief. I just wanted to take a moment to endorse Mayor Protem Liz, and it's nothing personal against Councilman Strobin, because he was one of the few votes I got for the temporary appointment for a city councillor a couple of years back. But it was just that Liz had served as mayor for seven years previously, and I think we need that experience in the transition to our, I guess, elected mayor this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharen. Anymore?
Nelda Perryman, La Center. One question is, I thought it was against the rules to comment on something that was on the agenda. I've been told that for many, many years. Is that not the truth?
Generally, it is. This evening, we've heard from the public that they wanted to speak, so we opened it up.
Okay. No, I know. Anyway, and also I want to endorse Tom. Thank you. He has a lot of support. I think he's going to be a good mayor, and I hope he gets your vote, because it means a lot to us to move forward. Thank you.
Let me add some clarity to the rules, and if something is on for a public hearing, then we wait to take comment on that matter until the hearing. But if it's not for a public hearing and the appointment of mayor is not scheduled for a hearing, then it's all right to comment on it, anything, whether it's on the agenda or not.
Thank you, Bronson.
Candy Irish, 1360, I can't remember. 1653 East Heritage Loop. I'm sorry, but we live part here and part there. So anyway, I think the reason, I think we're, okay, we're all confused is because that's the way it, we've always learned it, that we, if something was on the agenda, that we couldn't comment. But another reason why it kind of is is kind of upsetting is I didn't know that this was going to be the place where you put out your, you know, your, and, you know, your resume and everything like that. And if it was, I think that all candidates should have been given the, that ability to have a fair time, you know.
We actually were. We were told at the last meeting we could do so.
Okay, well, I must have missed that one. But anyway, I would also like to endorse Tom Strobin.
Thank you. Any others? Come on up, Jim.
Good evening, mayor and council, and citizens of La Center. I'm Jim Irish, former mayor of the city of La Center. I live at 1653 East Heritage Loop in La Center. The one thing I want to stress very strongly is that the job of mayor is to bring forth items with council that staff has come forward with, et cetera. They talk about it. Staff says, hey, we ought to bring this before council, and the mayor brings that before council with the staff talking, and the council listens. But if the vote on whether to go forward or not is not the mayor's, it's the city council. And the city council is the ones who run the city in a, in a economic and judicial way. There are many times when dealing with the tribe that, at the very beginning in 2004, that John, John Barnett, and Bill Ile, and David Barnett, and Phil Haru, and all of us would have our meetings. I always had, as mayor, I always had a city council member with me so that they could report to council what the mayor, I mean, what the meeting was going, discussing going on, and not have this, oh, it's your nepotism, et cetera. I wanted to say that because I appreciate all of the work that every one of you do on council. There is nothing wrong, that I've found with our council, that if you didn't, I didn't agree with it, that you had the right to discuss it with them here or house-wise. But I want to thank you all for your work and your endeavor of making the citizens of La Center first. The police department, Chief Richardson represents the citizens of La Center to keep them safe, and that's why they're here, because we were safe. So, and I thank you for all your hard work. You're doing a good job, and I appreciate it. But most of all, I want to keep things on an even keel, because pretty soon, Mr. Potter, pretty soon the city of La Center should be reaching its limit to where we have to look at going from five council people to seven. And I forget what the exact number is on that, but that's not something to be played with. That's something to work forward with. And I want to thank you all again for all of your hard work. Bronson, you do a good job, too.
Thank you. That number's 3,500. The number is 3,500. Is when the population hits that, you transition to a seven-person council. Oh, look.
I'm like, no way. Are we over the census?
5,000?
We're like 4,200.
Is the open comments closed? Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Al.
Always, 2188 East Gather Avenue. I wasn't going to get up tonight to talk. I was just going to observe, but I know where you guys are. I sat behind that deus for eight years. Proud member of the city of La Center. All I can say is that Liz has done a good job serving the community. She's been with us for a long time. To council members that are voting tonight, I would say that if you're satisfied with the way things have been going for the last four to six years, then I imagine we don't need to do a mayor change. If you're not satisfied with the direction that we've been going, or the citizens have been represented the way they wanted to be represented, then it's time for a change, and that change would be Tom. And it's only for temporarily. The citizens are going to get to speak at the next election. But up, the new ones, when you came on board, you were, you were elected because we were voting for change. You have an opportunity tonight to change, and I thank you very much for all your hard work, and once again, Liz, thank you.
Thank you, Al. Anyone else? Do we have callers?
We have quite a bit.
So for the callers for this evening's comment section, please remember to press star six to unmute yourself, and then you can speak. Introduce yourself and keep your comments to three minutes. Do we have any callers? Okay. No callers. Clerk, do we have any public comments that need to be read?
We have one.
Okay, proceed.
Jack Davis, 1524 West Alder Place. Councilmembers, tonight, you will make a decision that will have a major impact on the well-being of La Center. Under the leadership of Mayor Greg Thornton, the city has made great strides in improving management. This has never been an easy task due to the friendships and nepotism rife in our city government prior to this, prior to his administration. Anyone who has attended city council meetings over the past 10 or 12 years is aware of the dramatic change in the caliber of city employees. We are fortunate to finally have consummate professionals in the position of Director of Administrative Services, Maria Swinger Enskeep, MBA, Senior Accountant Riley Barbera, Public Works Director and Licensed Physic, or Professional Engineer Brian Cast, MBA, and interim Chief of Police Bob Richardson, among others. We want to keep them. Two candidates seek the favor of mayor. Liz Servini has served the city as a former mayor and council member since 1994. No one knows the history of La Center better than she does, nor has anyone given as much time and energy to improving our city. Her motivation in running is not driven by ego, but only to be out of service. During those 30 years of dedication, Liz has never accepted the stipend or travel reimbursements to which she has been entitled, thus saving the taxpayers of La Center thousands of dollars. That speaks to who she is. Tom Strobin showed no interest in serving La Center prior to becoming a council member. I have never seen him at a city council meeting over the years. He has little inclination to participate. The record indicates so far that in 2023, of 11 council meetings, he has not been present for five of them. He didn't bother to attend the important council retreat. Tom served with me last year on the Budget Advisory Committee and missed many of our meetings. When present, he rarely contributed anything. He has a business to run, and perhaps this is why he's understandably unavailable so much of the time. Why is he running? There's a lot more to the job than just having the title of mayor to stroke your ego. Liz will put in the time and the work. Tom will not. His performance, his past performance is indicative of that. We are close to reaching a solution to our policing situation. Now is not the time to bring in an unknown entity and risk jeopardizing the whole work put in by Chief Richardson and the current administration in negotiating this delicate matter. Ignore any friendships you may have and resist any pressure that may have been brought to bear on you on behalf of almost 4,000 people who call La Center home. Do what you know in your heart is the right decision. Select Liz Servini to be our mayor. Thank you.
I'm going to comment to that real quick. Jack, if you're listening, I just kind of find that to be a little distasteful, and whoever you think that you should be better serving our community, I think you could do it in a better way than that.
Any other comments to be read?
That was the only one.
All right. We thank everyone.
Can I clarify that number question?
Yes.
Okay, so once you exceed 2,500, you may go to seven council members, and once you exceed 5,000, you shall go to seven council members. So, thank you.
Get closer every year.
Thank you, Bronson. Brings us to the consent agenda, and if there are no requests to remove any items from this evening's consent agenda, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. This brings us to presentations and proclamations. And this evening, we have before us the Jewish American Heritage Proclamation. And I will read it for everyone. Proclamation declaring May 2023 as Jewish American Heritage Month. Declaring whereas Jewish American Heritage Month is an annual tribute to the generations of Jewish Americans who helped weave the fabric of American history, culture, and society, and to the contributions American Jews have continued to make today. And whereas antisemitism is a certain perception of Jews, which may be expressed as hatred toward Jews. And whereas antisemitism is an evil that threatens not only people who subscribe to the Jewish faith, but all people, no matter their creed. the Jewish faith, but all people, no matter their creed or background. And whereas antisemitism is an affront to the basic principles of respect, tolerance, pluralism, and democracy, and the shared values that bind Americans and many allies together. And whereas antisemitism threatens public life, the media, schools, the workplace, and the religious sphere. And whereas the city of La Center and city officials stand against all forms of racism, prejudice, bigotry, and hate, including antisemitism. And whereas together, we clearly identify hate, transform it into positive change, and turn darkness into light. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth Servini, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor pro tem of the city of La Center, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Jewish American And next on the agenda is the mayor's report. And I just have a couple of things to bring up. I joined the other Clark County mayors and we attended the recent Clark County Commissioners' public hearing on the urban growth projections. We were strongly urging the Clark County Commissioners to stay within their staff recommendation of the medium projections. However, it sounds as if they're leaning towards the high projections. So I would encourage all of you, any of you, to make your feelings known to the county of Clark County Commissioners. The issues before us, before all of us, if we grow, based on the projections of the large projections, it's going to impact our roadways, transportation, our schools, and everything, even greater than we know today. So that was the reason that all of the city mayors united and gave the same presentation and the same comments to strongly urge the commissioners to reconsider. I'd also like to mention that Brian Cast and I met with Mr. Soul earlier this week to discuss potential opportunities for us to come together and resolve the situation at his home. There's much more behind the scenes than any of us really recognized, and we would like to kind of extend the La Center wraparound approach to provide the needs that not only Don needs, but his family and his son. So wish us luck on that front to get the issue resolved. That brings us to attorney's report. And Bronson, I'll turn it over to you.
No report tonight, Mayor. I know, sorry.
Well, thank you. So we'll shift to council comments. And first up is Councilmember Fox.
Good evening. Glad to see so many faces. I think right now is just a big time for change in our community. You know, we were, had two articles in the newspaper. And, you know, between our school and our town, there's just, you know, a lot more voices. People are speaking up, everyone has their own opinions. And I think that's great that we all get involved as long as we keep it civil and be respectful. I think, yeah, there's a lot of change happening here tonight, but I think that no matter what happens, that this is a great opportunity for whoever does get appointed to have until November to really show us, you know, what choice is the right choice. And we all get to vote in November, so let's remember that. This is not the end of all ends. This is just a short period of time that we're appointing somebody. And so let's just, you know, remember that we have a voice coming up. I just want to give a special thanks to La Center United and to La Center Schools. I just appreciate everything that you guys stand for. And, you know, I love the schools so much, that's why I live here, that's why I moved back here to raise my children, run a business, and, you know, that's why I love to donate. Gold Star Tutoring loves to donate to La Center United because keeping that education there, keeping this, you know, the schools clean, you know, educated, having resources, you know, trying to make sure that the students have the healthiest upbringing they can have is the most important thing to me. And I just love serving on this council and having a chance to have a voice to help, you know, be a part of that change as it goes. So, other than that, thanks so much for being here. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Casper.
Oh, good evening. I apologize for not being there tonight. I'm out of town for work and it was not an option to get home early. So I do have a few things I want to share, but I think I'm going to save it till the next meeting so I can talk to everyone directly in person. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Casey. Councilmember Boyle.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see everybody. We have, that was the most public comment I've seen since I've been on council, so it was nice to hear everybody's thoughts and opinions and expressing their concerns. They're all definitely taken to heart and we listen to each and every one of you because we're, that's who we're here to represent is, you know, the citizens here. So I got a couple of things tonight. One thing, I, there's been several articles in different media outlets recently and, you know, some of them are painting our town in a bad light and that doesn't sit well with me. And so, you know, I just want to remind people that, you know, whatever your views may be or issues you may have, it, you know, that directly affects our city. And one in particular article, I thought that, you know, they were trying to make a statement about what this council might represent, which was completely false and untrue. But that also opens up doors for other opportunities that may, people may seek asylum in such a city. And that's not what we're here to try and promote. And so, that one I've been sitting on and putting a lot of thought into, but hopefully, you know, some of those media outlets can do a better job of their reporting. And I spoke to the person that they quoted in that, and, you know, she would have had different things to say had they talked to her actually in person. Also, with, yeah, we are going to appoint a new mayor tonight. I appreciate each and every one of you for your thanks and appreciation and glad that you guys trust us. We will try and make the best decision possible for the city. Lastly, last week, I was involved in a pretty traumatic motorcycle accident. I was not on the motorcycle, I saw it happen. I was inadvertently involved with it. And, yeah, it was pretty traumatizing, but I just want to, like, let people know, just be aware of what's going on out there. I mean, those things are so hard to see and things change in the blink of an eye and, you know, I mean, first date is not always everybody's first response, but calling 911 is like the first step. So, just a reminder for that. And lastly, I had a question. I know usually we have a meeting with the mosquito control board once a year? Are they at least come into, are they come in to at least give us some updates?
Yeah, we can reach out to our representative and see if they can come.
All right.
Give us an update.
Cool. And that's all I got.
Thank you. All right, councilmembers.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that was great, John. Completely agree. You know, it's scary what it, oh, sorry. This mic always picks up everything, so I push it away a little bit so that you don't hear the thumping, right? Newspapers can cause some serious damage to a city and we've kind of seen that this week with the article that was written. And I think Sean, our councilmember Boyle, spoke correctly about it. I would like to thank Peter Rosenkamp and the rest of the school board because the meeting last night was interesting, to say the least. And I think you guys did a really good job in sitting there and taking some of the comments that were thrown at you guys. As I've said before, I think it's a good, we have to have a great relationship with our schools and I think you're the right person for the job. I think that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Brings us to staff reports, and we will begin with Chief Richardson presenting the police staff report.
I'm going to be brief tonight because I know everybody's looking for the, everything that's happening after I speak. So I'm going to cover crimes for the month of March, arrests for the month of March, and then just some community messaging. For the month of March 2023, La Center had a total of 10 crimes reported, and that compares with 17 that were reported same month 2022. We had one assault, which was to school-aged students. We had one fondling, which is a case that was referred to the Children's Justice Center, and they're conducting the investigation. We had two thefts from vehicle, and one was no loss, and the other was an unlocked vehicle where they stole clothing. We had three larcenies. Two were thefts from construction sites, lumber and wiring, which are pretty common when you, your city's in the middle of being developed and people are building. And then we had one theft of a package from the mail. We had one motor vehicle theft where the owner actually recovered it himself and found it down the street. We had one impersonation, which was an overseas relationship scam with an older male and then somebody from another country. And then we had a vandalism where a vehicle was damaged. As far as arrests, we had two arrests reported in March of 2023 versus three arrests in March of 2022. The two arrests were trespassing and the other one was an other offense. Most of the time when you see an other offense, it's that somebody's been cited and released for driving on a suspended license. And then finally, we still have wheel locks, I'm trying to get rid of those before next Christmas. And so if anybody wants one, come on down, I'll give you two. So we have two for the price of one, which is free. We did receive the following dates from Ridgefield regarding their Burke Consulting and their law enforcement contract. And this is regarding the draft study. The week of 4/17, Burke team met and were supposed to create a draft report, and they were also talking to Ridgefield. The week of 4/24, which is this week, and we haven't heard anything yet, Burke is supposed to share the draft report with Ridgefield and La Center, teams for input. And then the week of May 1, after we've digested the report a little bit, the team will reconnect and will have discussions about what's in the draft report and some clarifying questions and stuff. So it's moving along. It's not, again, it's not as quick as I would like to see it go, but it is moving. We also, in the background, are having discussions with the Sheriff's Department because the Sheriff's Department is also interested now. I didn't want to, if something fell through with Ridgefield, I didn't want to start from zero with the county, want to be moving things along. My goal is to get something in place and wrapped up and direction going. I would hope, my dream is like August 1, and then we can see what we, what happens after that. So we're moving forward. If you didn't, are not aware, Blake, which was the legislation regarding drug possession, the legislators did not agree on a bill. So the current law sunsets, I believe it's July 1, and the city attorney can correct me. And at that point, individual cities will have to pass ordinances for drug possession. And so it can be a little confusing. So our hope is to have a special session and they come to some agreement statewide. If they don't, then I think the chiefs are going to get together, the county chiefs, because if, if we're going to do individual city ordinances on drug possession, it would be nice to have a standard county-wide. So at least you know, if you have certain drugs in one county, it's the same versus when you go to another county, it could be different. So that, that is moving along. I know that the pursuit bill passed. It didn't, we didn't get everything we wanted, but we did get it reduced from probable cause to reasonable suspicion, to trace people. Still doesn't cover property crimes, it doesn't cover stolen vehicles. I believe the governor's going to sign that either this week or next week at, he's opening an academy on the east side of the state, and I believe he's going to do a signing then. As far as a regional academy in Clark County, that was funded for, I believe, two classes plus a million dollars for capital improvements. So that is moving forward. And the sheriffs in Vancouver had a lead on that of where they're going to try to establish a local police academy, but that, that is good news. And that's really all I have as far as policing in La Center for right now. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Chief, I would, just wanted to say thank you for sending those emails and keeping us updated on the legislative session. That was great, great information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Richard?
Not tonight.
All right, that brings us to the Administrative Services Staff Report, and Ms. Maria Swinger Enskeep will present.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. The March sales tax disbursement was $58,000 compared to $39,000 a year ago, so that's a nice increase. Our gambling tax ends out the quarter strong at $377,000 for the first quarter. And then citizens may now sign up to receive their utility bills electronically. When you receive your bill, there will be an authorization code in the lower left-hand corner of your statement. And then you go, go to the website that is on there, which is e-noticesonline.com to set up your account. And then you will receive an email each month with a statement. And please note that when you do that, that is not signing you up for direct pay, and that is still encouraged. And if you would like assistance with getting signed up for your bill electronically, you can come in and we can help you with that. And with the cost of postage going up, this is a great alternative to getting that paper bill in the mail. And then the city received a grant for $2,500 from AWC to cover half of the Lexipol fee for 2023. And Lexipol is the company that produces our policy and procedure manual for the police department. Are there any questions?
Maria, can you go back to that slide real quick? Right there. Last page. So that grant that came in at $2,500, that's for a police and procedure manual.
We paid $5,000 for the year and we are, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I think you're answering the question.
Yeah, we paid $5,000 and that's something we pay at the beginning. And so, I mean, we do still have a police department, and so if we are going to try to get some of that money back and see if we can, yeah. But we still got the grant. That was a 50%, and they've given us that the last few years.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Maria. That brings us to 2.8 ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings. And back before us this evening is ordinance 2023-09, City Parks, and Mr. Brian Cast will present.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, council and citizens. So before you for consideration this evening is updates to Chapter 12.25 of the La Center Municipal Code, which is our parks rules. This code was last updated in 2009, and there's some areas that are not consistent with rules that are posted at many of our parks. With this ordinance and based on community feedback, we are proposing to make a few changes. First, to prohibit smoking and vaping in public parks. We are also looking to revise park hours from a fixed hourly schedule throughout the year to dawn to dusk. And unless it's otherwise posted at the park, we're also looking to prohibit activities that may impede the enjoyment and use of parks from other users. So these changes include adding a definition of dawn to dusk, which is basically sunrise to sunset. We have added a definition consistent with RCW for smoking, tobacco use, and inhalant delivery systems. We've also prohibited the use of those in parks. We've also added to the prohibited activities archery, shooting sports, firework discharge, vandalism, tagging, and hazardous operation of remotely controlled vehicles as prohibited in parks. Based on feedback from the first look, we attempted to add some language to allow trails to also be posted with different rules from that dawn to dusk. We've also confirmed that this code does not conflict with FAA regulation of operation of drones. As we, or if this code is adopted, we intend to add some additional park rule signs to parks that don't currently have posted rules. The cost for that is about $1,000. So at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions, but staff is suggesting that the council conduct a public hearing and then consider this ordinance for adoption.
Brian, can you elaborate a little bit more on that, signs for people to be able to use the trails?
Yeah.
Like what we were talking about?
Absolutely. So the existing code had a provision to state that the park rules are as described in the ordinance unless otherwise posted, but it just specifically identified parks. So we added trails to that as well. From what I understand, the concern was, you know, or the, what we were trying to achieve was being able to allow users to use parks outside of daylight hours essentially, if those trails are suitable for that. if those trails are suitable for that sort of use. So staff's thinking, I think, was like lighted trails or something like that. We could post a sign that says, you know, different than dawn till dusk rule or hours for those trails. It gets a little bit complicated because there are some trails that are within parks. So that may have not been the ideal solution, but if there's any other feedback, we're happy to try and wordsmith that a little bit if that's council's desire.
Real quick, hey, Jim Irish. The trail that runs beside your guys' house, is that lit or is that dark? So would that be something that you guys would be prohibiting after dark?
There's nothing in the code that says that it has to be a lit trail, so that would be something that, you know, sort of at staff and the mayor and council's discretion to sign. You know, there's an enforcement aspect to this, obviously.
Right.
You know, I think the goal is to try and, you know, avoid potential illicit activities in parks, you know, that could happen when it's dark outside. So there's sort of a balance there that needs to be achieved. But at least as drafted, we have the ability to post other hours on parks and trails with this ordinance.
And that is my concern, is that, you know, people that want to walk those trails after they've done dinner and put the kids to bed or whatever they've done.
Sure.
They're still allowed to do that in the city. I think that's pretty important. And I've heard that from a few people, including a few from in the audience here. Thank you.
Right, we will open up the meeting for public hearing on Ordinance 2023-09, City Parks. So those wishing to speak, please step forward. Give us your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Kimberly Elbin.
You know, just because an ordinance, you know, was drawn up in, what, 2006? Or it doesn't make it obsolete, you know? Why are we even considering this, you know? Is there excess vandalism? I believe Chief told me that. But, you know, that's never been brought up. Why are we changing this? I walk, you know, by Jim Irish's place sometimes early as 4:30 in the morning, and, you know, sometimes, you know, 7:00, 7:30, you know? And it's dark, but I don't have any problem with it. Sometimes I carry a flashlight, sometimes I don't. But if it's not broke, you don't need to fix it. You know, I came up and talked to somebody last meeting, you know? You know, unless there's some overriding factor, which hasn't been brought up here at council, you know, we don't need to change what's there just because it was done, you know, 10 years ago, 12 years ago, you know? Okay, well, God bless America, thank you.
Thank you, Al. Next? Are there any callers? If we have any callers wishing to speak on the City Parks Ordinance 2023-09, please press star six to unmute yourself and then provide us with your name and limit your comments to three minutes. Any callers? Okay. Any comments to be read?
There are none.
We will close the public hearing. And I guess the follow-up question to both Brian and the chief as far as what's prompting the changes with ordinance, so clarification for?
Sure. So the primary purpose of opening up this ordinance was to add prohibition to smoking and a definition of what smoking is to be prohibited in parks. Again, we've received some public feedback numerous times about people smoking in parks and, you know, without a law saying you can't do it, you can do it. While we were in there, the park hours was something that we brought forward to, again, be consistent with rules that are posted at many of our parks. So, you know, there's definitely the option to not make that change. We can still post dawn to dusk in parks that we feel that's appropriate, and other parks and trails would revert to the previous hours that were in the code. And I'm trying to find that here real quick. 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM is what's currently in our ordinance. Again, the ordinance allows us to be able to post additional hours, dawn to dusk or otherwise, in those parks. And then the other items also just kind of came up as sort of best practice, you know, archery, shooting sports, and that sort of thing to prohibit in parks. Because if there's not a prohibition on the books, then it's technically allowed, even though it may not be safe to do that sort of thing. So hopefully that answers the question. Happy to answer any others.
Chief, the vandalism, is there a lot of vandalism happening?
I don't, I'm trying to learn how to, Maria's telling me how to use this, I apologize. It didn't come with a manual. So there are, there have been vandalism in parks. Is there a lot of it? I would probably say not, not really. We don't have a lot of gang graffiti, those kinds of things. And I just want to remind everybody that these ordinances are just tools for the police department to have, because we have to go out there in these parks and use some common sense. And if somebody is doing something illegal and we're trying to get, use a tool to get them out of the parks, that's what it's there for. If it's, you know, two adults that are just walking through the park on a path and looking at the stars, the police aren't going to deal with that. I mean, we're going to just tell everybody, you know? So that's the way, I've done it for 40 years. That's the way, it's just another, what they say, another tool in the toolbox. They deal, because every now and then you'll come across somebody where you ask them to do something, and they politely tell you no, and then you have to go back and fall on the law and the ordinance. And so that's what I think is important. And I also think it's important, like Brian said, hey, probably archery's probably not a good idea, especially by the skate park, right? I mean, you know, you don't want to have an arrow in your back, but that's just something we might want to think about. So I think it needs to be updated, and it's really up to you how restrictive you want to have it.
Yeah, no, thank you for explaining that. That makes sense to me, because that's what I was thinking. I was like, what, so if I go play basketball at 11 o'clock at night, what I'm like, you know, violating?
And that happens.
At the Holly Park, you know?
And that happens. And then, you know, we get complaints sometimes, especially here in the summer when the kids are out late. And let's say they're playing basketball at 2:00 in the morning, and we're getting numerous calls on it.
Oh, sure.
That would be something where we might say, you guys need to go find someplace else. Go find a more desolate area to play basketball.
That makes sense, because they're walking from home probably, and they're making a little party up there probably, and, you know, yeah.
But there's other times where, I mean, we walk out there and the kids, you know, you walk up and you, what are you doing? They're just talking, and they're just talking, not doing anything.
Oh, of course, giving them a place to go. Yeah, that's a far in line, I get that, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, any other questions?
I mean, I just, I mean, I see some reasonability and rationality, I guess, in all this. I do like with our new park that's lit, the Riverside Park or whatever, there was some vandalism done there and could have, who knows what time it was done? But, you know, if we ever did find out who did that, you know, I guess that's a good place to start with, you know? Trying to at least get them to be held accountable. So, Al, I appreciate your comments always, but I don't have any real concerns with this update to the code, so.
And I do play basketball, by the way.
All right, entertain a motion.
I move to approve Ordinance 2023-09 as presented.
Okay.
Motion and a second approving Ordinance 2023-09, City Parks. Excuse me, all those in favor? Oh, wait a minute, we need to take a roll. Clerk, can you take a roll?
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Servini?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. So that brings us to unfinished business, an appointment of interim mayor. And open it up for council discussion and follow-up discussion from last meeting. We wished to move this forward to this evening, so we had everyone here. And just open it up for additional discussion.
Yes, thank you. Last meeting, you were able to speak, so I wanted to be able to speak, and that's the same. So I wrote something up for you guys. I am honored to be nominated for mayor of La Center. I've learned so much in the short five years I've been on the city council. I am known to ask tough questions that many members of the community wanted answers for. Some have agreed with this and some haven't. But I've never stopped working for all the residents of La Center. With so many challenges and hurdles on the horizon, I know I can make a difference and bring a new perspective to the city as mayor. I know that there have been questions, if I have the time to be mayor. The simple answer is yes, I do, and yes, I can. I've built my companies to run without me if needed, but I always have one hand on the wheel. The first principle of a city is to provide protection to its residents. I will work with city staff in our surrounding communities in implementing police protection that works for La Center now and in the future. We cannot do this with our current financial status. Our card rooms have provided the majority of money for the city, which we will always be grateful and will work with them for years to come. But we must diversify our income so that we are not reliant on one source. The city staff and I will work tirelessly to bring in other business and industry to the city, expanding the junction and growing the downtown. We have seen the La Center School District at our council meetings keeping the community informed on what is happening there for the last several months. I believe that the future of La Center lies with our children, so I want to expand that and work with them, assist them where we can, and support their needs as much as possible. I've seen a divide for the last couple of years between our community organizers and the city. I want to mend this and help them both achieve their goals. The city and I will work with these people to make sure our days, the Christmas festival, Meals on Wheels, and other events are the best in Clark County. Communities that work closely together thrive, which makes them the strongest and most desirable. I would like to thank the Kallits tribe for their generosity. Donating almost $200,000 to La Center schools is extraordinary and humbling. Goodwill like this should always be commended. It makes me excited to work with Chairwoman Patty Kinswak Geiser and the rest of the council to build a lifelong partnership with them. I have said since 2018, one of La Center's greatest resources is our outdoors. I've made my wish list known in several meetings over the years, as some of you know. I would like to expand our trail system so that it will bring hikers and mountain biking from all over the county, a true boat launch for non-motorized vehicles, and a dock system for those to use. I'd also like to look at installing turf at our baseball fields and building a soccer field for the kids to host leagues on. Our community is growing, and with it comes many obstacles. Not being a career politician, I know I will still have lots to learn, but I am up for the task at hand. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Oh, sorry, I didn't understand.
I mean.
It doesn't have to go in order, does it?
No, no, you just, you look like you were about to say something.
No, sorry.
I guess Bronson, can you tell me what I'm not allowed to say?
That'd be a long list. Let me just talk about process, okay? Let's start with that. Okay, so if you'll recall from our last meeting, we can go into executive session to discuss or evaluate the qualifications of the, I'm going to call you guys candidates. So to discuss the qualification of the candidates, the executive session is not for the purpose of ranking or conducting a secret ballot or vote. It's just to discuss qualifications. You then come back into open session, and you can do an interview of the candidates, ask questions, see if the candidates want to make any additional statements. At the end of that, you're able to go back into executive session again, if you wish, to again discuss qualifications, having heard the questions and answers. Then come back and open session and make a decision on the appointment. Now, last meeting, Mayor Protem Servini and Councilmember Strobin joined us in the executive session because their participation was necessary in order to have a quorum of the council. That's not the case tonight. So in an executive session, it will be Councilmember Fox, Councilmember Casper, and Councilmember Boyle. And our candidates will patiently wait here, coming back into open session. So it's not a matter of would you, when you're in open session, fair game. You can ask anything you want, say pretty much anything you want. It's in the executive session where we really have to put the guardrails on our discussion.
Yes, the first question is, do you need?
Yeah, that's what, I was just going to ask Casey, I don't know how you feel. I mean, I'm personally okay with doing it in public session or whatever the right terminology is, but I don't know if you or Casey had a thought? Either way?
Well, I kind of, I kind of learned the last time that we might have jumped the gun a little bit and went into an executive session a little bit too quick, and that was when we decided that, you know, I just think it's a lot more. I think the correct way to do it is wait until Melissa was here so that it was the three of us voting and Liz and Tom were a part of that. So I guess the short answer should be, I don't see a need for an executive session on this. I'd like to know if Liz has anything else to say, and then I think Tom should get another chance to respond as well. And with that, ask whatever questions we have with either one of them.
So it sounds like there's a sentiment to forego the executive session and just go right into any additional candidate's statement and questions and answers? Okay, if that's, I'm getting head nods.
Well, this is new for all of us. We're just, you know, trying to feel it out as we go.
Yeah, unless there's any additional questions, I think everyone's comfortable with going forward.
Oh, yeah, proceeds. I mean, I don't know, do either one of you have additional, do you have an additional comment to make regarding?
No, I don't have any additional comments.
Tom?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I mean, the only thing that, I mean, I guess I'm just going to say is that, like, myself, and I feel like I can speak for Casey and Melissa on this, we're absolutely respectful of you guys. And, you know, I think that there's passion for this position. It comes from a true place. And so I think that either direction, you know, we choose to go with this, that it is going to be, we're going to be heading in the right direction regardless. And I think it just comes down to, you know, where we want to go personally. And for me anyways, I ran to be a city councilman of the center for some things that I feel passionate about. And, yeah, I guess that's kind of what I have to say about it.
Yeah, thanks, Sean. Yeah, I agree. I mean, we're all, you know, a team of some sort. I think all our hearts are in the right places. And I think at the end of the day, we're all here to do, you know, goodbye our city. And, you know, I think that, like I said, this is a, you know, a six-month opportunity, you know? So after this, I mean, then that's, you know, November is where the real guns come out and, you know, who's really, you know, the city gets to speak, and I think that that's the most, you know, important piece later. So, you know, right now, it's just, we have an opportunity and, yeah, to try something new, so.
Well, like I said before, I really don't like being on the computer trying to do this. But this is definitely not a decision that I take lightly, and I don't believe that Councilmember Fox or Councilmember Boyle do either. don't believe that, that Councilmember Fox or Councilmember Boyle do either. What's been amazing is the, the actual input that we've received, whether it be people speaking in the public comments tonight or emails that have come into us. So, you know, I, I feel, I feel confident that I've heard what people have to say and that as a representative of people of La Center, that this is, the decisions made tonight are going to be, are going to be the best for the city. So with that, I just want to reiterate that it's, this isn't something that's, that's being taken lightly by any means.
Okay, so if there are no more questions, answers or statements, the next order of business would be a motion appointing one of the candidates, a second and a vote.
I'm making a motion to appoint a candidate? With a vote? Say it one more time.
A motion to appoint, fill in the blank.
Oh, okay. I make a motion to appoint Tom Strobin as mayor of La Center.
I make a motion to appoint Tom Strobin for the mayor of La Center.
Okay, so I will take that as a second. And.
Second.
A vote. So just do a roll call.
Like I said, this is new. I'm just trying to hear the teacher.
That's fine.
Second.
So, yes, and you vote in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Casper?
I vote in favor of the motion that was just made to appoint Tom Strobin as mayor.
Okay. And Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a majority.
Thanks, Liz.
All right, we have a motion and a unanimous approval of Councilmember Strobin finishing out the interim mayor position. And good luck to you.
Bronson, can we do a swearing in?
Don't do that.
Yes. I'm sorry. Sure.
We'll coach you through it.
Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Thomas Strobin, do solemnly swear.
I, Thomas Strobin, do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States and of the state of Washington.
That I am a citizen of the United States and the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
Truly, faithfully, diligently and impartially.
Truly, faithfully, diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office.
Perform the duties of the office.
Of mayor of city of La Center.
Of mayor, city of La Center.
In and for Clark County and the state of Washington.
In and for Clark County and the state of Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
Before I close this meeting, I do want to say a couple of things. I know there's been some nervousness because I do ask those tough questions that people don't approve of, or some don't and some do. I will work with the city to make those amends and with some, with the residents as well. Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Meeting is closed.